Good evening and welcome to the Montebello City Council meeting of October 11th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Mr. City Clerk, if you would please take role.
Mayor Prossen Peralta.
Present.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Here.
Councilmember Melendez.
Here.
Councilmember Tomayo.
Here.
Mayor Torres.
Here. Now we have all members present. For a closed session this evening, we will be dealing with two matters. One is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Navarro versus the City of Montebello. And two, public employee appointment under Government Code Section 54957 for the position of city manager. Mr. City Attorney, if you would please read the statement of public oral communications.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the public may submit a speaker card to the city clerk's staff for closed session items. Prior to the beginning of the statement, speakers will be called in order received. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak on closed session items shall not exceed three minutes per person. State law prohibits the city council from taking action or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the mayor and city council.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Clerk, do we have any comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker for closed session.
Please proceed.
Speaker Linda Nicholas for a closed session item.
Good evening. Before you go into closed session, to choose a city manager, I would like to bring some information to light. It is my understanding Ben Kim, who was previously fired from our city of Montebello, is under consideration. Please review his past.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am. If you could please not mention specific names of employees of other, our city or any other jurisdiction, it could lead to potential issues related to their employment.
Are they going to know who I'm talking about in closed session?
You just mentioned a name.
Okay, well, yeah, I know that, but that's a person that's in another consideration.
Can you, again, just please not, thank you.
Okay, I'll just say the position that they hold in other cities. Please review his past employment record. He was hired as assistant city manager in the city of Rosemead. He left to go to the city of Moreno Valley, was let go there. Then he returned to the city of Rosemead as city manager. But if you look at their agenda, he is currently under professional evaluation and the city council will be firing him soon. He also has ties to city attorney Glassman at Avantgard, which is not what the city needs for transparency. Also, he has no educational degrees or experience to qualify him to run our city as a manager. The man from Huntington Park is currently the assistant city manager, was given that position by Rendon after gifting him a position in the city of Linwood. Again, no educational degrees or experience to run our city. He has ties to the campaign manager that ran your three campaigns. Again, not what our city needs for transparency. You have a very qualified interim city manager, Arlene Salazar. She has proven she is capable of running our city as a city manager and knows the departments, staff and our city. She has worked in that position for the last 10 months. She has worked well with the city council. Would you please consider her as the next city manager? Please offer her the position and not bring in outsiders that may cause us problems. Thank you.
Mayor, that does conclude all speaker cards for closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And just as a general addition to the statement by Mr. Tapia, our city attorney this evening, there have been instances, actually recently, I think, within the last couple of weeks, where potential applicants to other cities were fired from their current place of employment once those councils found out that they were seeking other jobs. So to further Mr. Tapia's point, these matters are confidential for several reasons and one of them is to, you know, to the extent possible, to protect those individuals at the jobs that they currently have. So, Mr. Tapia, thank you for the warning and the words there. We will now recess into closed session at 6:06 PM.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order at 7:17 PM and also thank the audience for entertaining a closed session that ran a little bit longer than usual. Mr. City Attorney, if you can please report out.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. With all five members of the City Council being present, the City Council met in closed session, discussed the following items. City Council discussed item number one. City staff made a presentation. The City Council provided direction. No final reportable action was taken. With respect to item number two, city staff made a presentation. The council provided direction. No final reportable action was taken. That concludes my report out of closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tapia. For our invocation, if I can please have the city clerk, Christopher Jimenez, lead us. And for our pledge of allegiance, I would ask Chief Espinoza if you could lead us this evening. Please stand.
Let us bow our heads. As we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, Chief. We will do a slight reordering of the ceremonial items and presentations. I'd like to start off with breast cancer awareness month. Breast cancer awareness month. Are you seeing pink, Montebello? October is a month we support and recognize as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This worldwide annual campaign is vital to increasing awareness and early detection of breast cancer. Still today, according to the Center for Disease Control, about 240,000 women are diagnosed with breast cancer annually in the United States. That's why this year, the City of Montebello is asking the members of our community to help us turn Montebello pink for one day on Wednesday, October 18th. All city staff will be encouraged to wear something pink and learn more about breast cancer research and early detection. In addition, our Montebello Fire and Police Departments are currently selling promotional t-shirts, mugs, patches, and more to raise funds for City of Hope and Breast Cancer Research. If you'd like to purchase an item from them, please feel free to contact each respective department about available purchasing options. And to learn more about Breast Cancer Awareness Month, visit nationalbreastcancer.org. October is also the month we recognize bullying prevention. Bullying can happen anywhere, anytime, anyplace, and affects people both young and old. While many of us may picture bullying as a physical act, it often takes on many different forms such as verbal, social, and online abuse. In this digital age, we've seen the toll social media can have on our youth's mental health and the tragic repercussions it can have if left unchecked. Anyone can play a vital role to prevent or intervene in bullying. Positive intervention and education can make a difference to those who feel bullied, those who do the bullying, and those who witness bullying. Bullying is often linked to negative impacts on mental health, substance abuse, and suicide. For this reason, as leaders, educators, residents, and parents in Montebello, we all have a role to recognize bullying, build a safe environment, and have open communication for positive change. Please visit stopbullying.gov to learn more. Side by side with Bullying Prevention Month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In our country, on average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by someone they know. This equates to more than 10 million women and men in a single year. This important topic was officially recognized in October 1987 as a way to connect and unite victims of domestic violence with resource organizations and help. Domestic Violence Awareness Month asks us to support the safety and well-being of anyone in need as a result of the threat or act of domestic violence. Montebello stands by victims and survivors of domestic violence this month and all year long. We encourage community members to understand the threat of domestic violence, recognize its signs, listen, and support victims with compassion. Nationally, domestic violence hotlines on a typical day receive more than 20,000 phone calls. Please visit thehotline.org, and if you or somebody you know is dealing with the threat of domestic violence, call the National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-SAFE to get them help. A final and important theme to recognize this month, the City of Montebello acknowledges October as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. October was first designated as Down Syndrome Awareness Month in the 1980s as a time to celebrate people with Down Syndrome and make others aware of their abilities and accomplishments. Often, people with Down Syndrome face stereotypes and offensive myths, but they've been shown time and again that their condition is just one part of who they are and does not define who they are as a person nor their abilities. They are Olympians, models, musicians, actors, and active members of our society. For this reason, we also advocate sharing a message of love, inclusion, and respect this month and all year round. Blue and yellow ribbons are a sign of support for Down Syndrome Awareness Month, so if you see these colors intertwined with pink ribbons throughout this month, now you know what they mean and can help others learn as well. To learn more about Down Syndrome Awareness Month, visit ndss.org. And lastly, in our ceremonial items and presentations, I would ask that the council join me in front of the lectern, and I would also like to welcome up Donald Travis, our Citizen of the Month for October. Tonight, we honor a Montebello legend, Donald Travis, and the remarkable Travis family, whose philanthropic contributions have left an enduring mark on our city. In 1947, the Travis family made the move from Bradford, Pennsylvania, to Montebello, California for the health of their older family members. The family arrived in front of what was then Montebello High School at an uncle's home, which is now the address of the Montebello Adult Center. It was here their legacy began at MHS and where the members of the Travis family graduated as proud MHS Oilers. In the late 1950s, Don was introduced to the International Order of Demolay, Montebello Chapter. He joined the Masonic Youth Order, where he received multiple honors, and was also an active member in the Demolay Club at the Montebello High School campus. In the 1960s, John joined the Montebello Masonic Lodge Number 451 and played a pivotal role in that organization. He worked to pass a motion for the lodge to annually provide $1,000 scholarships to student applicants from Montebello, Schur, and Vail High Schools. Later, he would oversee the addition of two trade school scholarship awards of $1,000. Don's involvement in the Montebello Masonic High 12 Luncheon Club has been transformative. He chaired the Junior Citizen of the Month Award and luncheon, providing scholarships to students, all while showcasing their achievements in the Montebello Reporter newspaper. The scholarships provided by the club, along with the generous contributions of the Infusino family, have made dreams come true for many young and Montebello scholars. And so, Mr. Travis, on behalf of the Montebello City Council and the City of Montebello, I would like to thank you for all of your contributions to our city and present this proclamation as Citizen of the Month. And would you like to share a few words?
And I'd like to thank the first female principal of Monville High School, Helen, for coming out from retirement to be here, as she was central to those programs that you referred to at lunchtime. The city we left, and the reason we left, was cold weather. It was really cold weather, and then it flooded in the summer while that snow came down through the Pennsylvania Valley. When we arrived in California and got through our first nice, calm winter, it snowed in Montebello. When we arrived here, we didn't have exact, other than the fact that my uncle lived here and his son was a teacher at Monville High School. We lived at the California motel across the street from Ostrom Chevrolet. Then we lived in the riverfront walkway down, as you go down the hill here on the left, because it had kitchenettes. And then we lived on California Avenue. And when my wife and I got married, and she has also graduated from Monville High School, we lived in three different places in the city of Montebello. And one interesting footnote on one of them, because it's always kind of nice to share, one of the married couples who was in the apartment house across from Belkin's Market said to us in the afternoon, "Oh, you'll be sure to watch my cousin on her first night on television, Barbara Streisand, so that you can see what it is that she does." And of course, we all know the history of that. So it was always kind of fun to have that, you know, touch with the city. I did prepare a couple remarks to be expedient. I would first like to thank the city for this nice recognition and thank my wife and two daughters. Lori Ray could not be here tonight with us, and the other daughter is in Massachusetts, who have given me the space and the time that it takes to carry out projects such as you are now recognizing. Without my wife Nora being the total support of everything that I do and allowing me to do all those things and travel to where I need to travel and to take the time I need to take, she takes care of the to-do list. And so, that's a great help. Even though in recent years I have lived in North County, my trips and reasons for being back in Montebello often keeps me well acquainted with the area I really grew up in. Years ago, the Demolays had an arrangement with the city council where once a year, we would sit in with each of you and help handle the business in front of us all. I do recall that one major item we passed was for allowing a Baskin and Robbins ice cream. ice cream business in Montebello. One important matter I took care of that to do, care of to do, was for my friend, the former mayor, Charles F. Mees. While he was, while his team was in charge, the new city hall etc. became what you are in today. Mees lost touch with most of the Montebello folks and sort of disappeared. I located him, worked with him, and handled his passing. His picture hangs on your Wall of Fame in the hallway by the offices there, and his name is on the perpetual plaque on the wall as you come up the steps and into the city hall. He did a lot for the city of Montebello while he was in office, and I knew that that needed to be recognized and the man should get how things turned out deservedly his way. My brother, Jim Travis, went on from Monville High School auto shop to a full display in the Speedway Museum, Nebraska, of his former Bonneville race car, fire suit, toolboxes, and all that kind of stuff. He is very famous in that field and in the movie, The World's Fastest Indian, where he had a major part in providing the vehicles for that movie. So that was about motorcycle racing and Bonneville. It doesn't qualify him for the Monville Hall of Fame. One other item I would like to mention that you did in the public service of Sarkis and the Montebello Reporter. His, since I became acquainted with him and he was aware of our program, 10 times a year, he gives me space, gives us space in the Montebello Reporter where the bio that the kid wrote and gave to assembled persons and took their picture with the counselor and the parents and the principal, if he could make it, and those are always last-minute waits, then appears in the Montebello Reporter. And people have commented that when they saw what Sarkis has done with that stuff in the Montebello Reporter on Facebook. And so it has caught their attention. So I thank Sarkis, yeah, I know he's not here tonight, for that too. But I wanted to give public recognition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members and distinguished guests.
And the part that I always struggle with, we also have several gifts for you to take home with you this evening. So we'll help hold these for the photo as well. I'm going to pass that down. As a token of our appreciation for your service. And just like many of our community servants and community leaders, sharing the acknowledgements as to your accomplishments and talking about all the ways that others have lifted you up, and that's the way that leadership works, that's the way that community service works. And, Mr. Travis, just thank you so much for everything that you've done for our community. Ms. Salazar, are there any corrections to the agenda?
Good evening, Mayor. We do have just the correction, and that was for the recognition of the youth commissioner, which is going to move to October 25th. And on item number 15, we have a revised attachment A, which was distributed to council and uploaded also to our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salazar, and thank you, Mr. Clerk, for helping us out here. Moving on to item number eight, police efforts and crime updates per district. Ms. Salazar?
At this time, I'd like to call up Chief Espinoza, who will be giving the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim, and council members. First of all, I'd like to apologize. I was trying to get this to you council meeting, but as I will explain, I've had some difficulties with upgrades in our systems, as well as some coding issues and some complexities that I'm working through with the department. But I'll explain that as I go through. But I'd like to give you a crime update kind of within your districts, a little bit more based on our beats, our beats, our patrol area beats, which I'll go ahead and explain. And usually, this first slide that I'll show here next, if I were presenting this to you just as the staff report, I would give you some type of cover sheet letter or fact sheet just to... There's a lot going on here, so I'll just read some of it. So this came as of your request. I believe Councilmember Jimenez had brought this up, some crime around Rodriguez Park, some violence. And Councilmember Peralta had mentioned some property crime issues too that she was interested in. So what we did was we gathered data from our records management system, as well as our computer aided dispatch system and our automated filled reporting systems. So those are the three main systems. Automated filled reporting systems being the system that their officers use to take their digital reports. Within the last couple of years, we've been basically paperless, which is good and bad in some ways, but paperless, so in a lot of ways, it's good. And also our computer aided dispatch, which is what our communications, our dispatchers, and the radio calls that go out and the types of incidents. Records management is where we borrow, get our report numbers and things like that. So for the crime data that you'll be looking at, we're looking at, for the citywide crime, we're looking from January 1st, 2023 to January 30th, 2023, compared to the previous same time period last year, right? So that's for citywide. For the districts or the beats, I broke that down by quarter three just because the maps, again, bear with me, based on the technology that we have, it was rather laborsome to get it, right? And there would have been too much going on within the small districts to give you all the dots on one, and you'll kind of see what I'm talking about as we move on. We broke it down. Part one crime, part one crime includes violent crime and property crime, being violent being homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. Property being burglary, motor vehicle theft, or GTA burglary for motor vehicle and theft, right? And again, the quarter for quarter three would have been for this year from July 1st through September 30th, compared to the same quarter last year, same time period for 2022. Some of the challenges I had, and again, for, because of the, which caused a little bit of delay here, when we, last year, just right before I got here, we had upgraded our computer aided dispatch system, as well as our records management system, right? And so with large data and being inputted and pulling from different areas and coding being slightly different this year, some of the data was, I wouldn't say it was lost, but it might have got pulled into a different bucket, right? There are many different sections for theft and many different sections for burglary. Each agency codes a little bit different, where they might code something, a theft that occurred on a sidewalk as opposed to theft that occurred at a bus stop, right? So all that had to be rectified with new codes. So that was switched, as well as our computer aided dispatch system, which was switched over. And again, that was taking certain data from each system. So again, some migration issues that all those systems created that I had to basically go back and manually pull some things or had my people pull some things. In addition to that, traditionally, since I've been on the job since the past 80 years, I believe, nationally, police agencies have been using part one crime reporting data to the FBI, right? Because they are the, they are the clearinghouse, they are the tracking system. So about five years ago, they changed that system to the national incident, national incident-based reporting system, right? Which gave them many more categories, which is good because it gives you a lot more details as to what's going on in your individual city and your individual areas. It creates a bunch of different codes, as I mentioned, for different areas, right? Which is good for us to pull up. So it kind of, you know, so just, we just migrated to that in July. And we were one of the last, there are still a few agencies in California that have not migrated over, but we were in the last few. And also created some data issues, right? But, you know, even going back just the old school way, because no matter what, if I have my people go back and count 100, if there are 100 burglaries, if I pull every burglary report and have somebody manually read, I know it's a burglary, but as you know, based on the numbers that we'll see, it's labor intensive. So again, my apologies, the numbers are very accurate. Even if it's within like a 95 percentile range, even the crimes that maybe a theft was caught as a burglary or burglary was miscategorized as a burglary from a motor vehicle, in the overall part one crime reporting, they're still caught in a category, in one of those two categories. So that could be the 5% difference, right? So I just want to, full disclosure on that part of it. So when I first got here last year, I was trying to pull crime as I was used to seeing it, right? And I wasn't able to, but analytical tools that we had. So I went back to the company who just helped us with the upgrade to basically allow me to pull certain data via our beats, our patrol area beats. We have six beats. There are five council members and five districts, right? So it took me a while just to get the, to get the company to alter that. And we had to pay for that too, right? I'm going to go back to the company and ask them. I want to be able to pull both ways. Technical solution for that, I just didn't have enough time to do it here. We have a meeting next month with the company, with the representative from the company. That will be one of the requests, right? So I can pull individually. That will be rectified. So if I go on to the next page, before I go into that actually, and again, this goes to how Montebello has been tracking. Councilmember Jimenez had asked about, ma'am, you had asked about violent crime. So I wanted to cover that outside of this because we here in Montebello weren't necessarily, there wasn't a way for me to track individual shootings because we weren't necessarily coding for that. We were captured, captured that court category under aggravated assault, right? Which is imminent threat or death or something of that nature. So not shootings in itself, right? So we will be coding for shooting victims and people being shot at in the future. But for the period from January 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2022, we had 14 ADWs assaults with a deadly weapon being, using, in which a firearm was used. We had seven of those, right? Which were gang related. And then one murder, which was gang related, which we did make an arrest on. It was a homeless issue off of Slauson, from what I remember. This year, January 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 23, we had a total of 11 shots fired where a gun was used against a victim. Three of those were gang related. In addition, two of our three murders were gang related. However, we were able to make arrests on all our homicides. Those two gang relateds, one was a Pico gang member. They drove over here, a person died. The other gang member was a Pico, I'm sorry, the first gang member was Almonte, domestic violence, the female died here. Second one was a Pico Rivera gang member. Everything happened on that side of the border. He crossed over to this side, and they passed away. We were able to work with the sheriff. Also in custody. So I want to say, as far as safety issues, Councilmember Jimenez, those arrests have been made, right? There could be more shots fired heard in the area, and maybe things are necessary, are maybe going unreported. And that, that we do know about, we do respond to. So again, please have your constituents report as much as, as much as they possibly can. So to go to my first slide for the, for the time period here that you're looking at. So you can see overall for violent crime, that first box here, we're down just about 18% in property crime, right? The greatest being, I'm sorry, in violent crime, the greatest being on our sexual assault numbers, right? Of those sexual assaults, this year, we've had 12 rapes, just rapes alone, right? So although I will say we've had those rapes, and those are all sexual assault numbers, the 12 were not necessarily stranger rapes. They, there were either acquaintance, domestic violence, something. Usually would bring the great concern as it would for any of you if we have a series of stranger rapes, right? Where somebody is going out. We have not had that. So that is a good thing. But again, all those, all those categories are down. When it comes to property crime, the two categories that were up are burglary from motor vehicle, up 11 crimes from last year, 199 versus 188. So a 5% increase. And then also thefts, right? Councilmember Peralta, you had mentioned thefts, right? So we're up, we're up 37 theft, right? Which is not good, but, you know, the, of any of the crimes, maybe thefts are at least, you know, nobody's getting hurt by those, right? And I think a lot of that has to do with some of the changes. Stores are backing off and allowing people to leave with some of things, not... Please jump in if you have any questions on any of these slides. On the next slide, for the next two slides, you'll see the color codes you see where it says A, B, C, D, E, and F are color coded based on our beats, right? Those are our beats. We have an Adam beat, a Boy beat, a Charlie beat, a David beat, an Edward beat, and a Frank beat, right? Your districts are outlined in dark, right? The crimes, the part one crimes for our beats are color coded in those different colors. So red for A beat, orange for B, blue for E, and then purple for F. And you can kind of roughly see how your districts overlap a little bit within that for the violent crime. Had I have, in the future, I'll have the ability, what I, I think what would have shown better here would have been a heat map so that you could see where the hotspots are in your different areas. And generally speaking, and you'll see as I go through these slides, those hotspots are going to be kind of where we'd expect them, right? Generally, it's dense housing areas, apartment buildings, main corridors, the Garfield corridor, maybe Woodyard corridor, where we have businesses, the Best Buy shopping center, where we're getting a lot, where we happen to get a lot of thefts, and then other shopping areas, right? So Matt and Mr. Mal, you have the mall in your area, right? So you'll see certain hotspots with that. I just didn't have the ability to, to create a heat map right now with the technology. Had to jump through hoops just to get this. So I promise you, we'll soon, or we should be able to have some of this cleaned up.
And Chief, I apologize. If you can just clarify one more time, the A through F color coding, what that corresponds to?
Sure. So if you see, let's take A, which would be most of that is Councilmember, or all of it actually is Councilmember Peralta, right? So you'll see those red dots, right? That's part one crime for your area there for that time period. You also, ma'am, you also overlap into our district C, our beat C, right? So those are in yellow. So that kind of shows you the crime with your district. You're just split between two districts, right? So Council, Mayor Torres, where you're at, you're kind of split between our beat D and our beat C, right? So you have green dots within your map area and also yellow part one crime dots.
So this is just basically trying to reconcile the beat to the district?
Beat to the district, right, for now. Just because I don't have the, trying to work with the technology and the overlaps. So hopefully, within the next six to eight months, I'll have that rectified with our Tyler Tech, which is our company that we use just about for everything, to be able to pull this data by district. So I'm not having to do this. But I wanted to give you some type of visual so you could take a look to see what's going on. look to see what's going on. And again, in the future, for me, for this type, because those are just dots, right? But if you can see, if we were to have a heat map, you could see the areas, right? And in my mind, as a police officer, or even as a chief, I know that the Garfield corridor, right, and I'm going down from your district all the way down to Mayor Torres', right, that we do have some issues and concerns there, what can I do as a chief to affect that? Is it a decoy car? Are we having more thefts? Do you have to do more education with businesses? How can we disperse that? Because we know that's our strongest area for crime, traditionally, right? Those would be magnets, you know, crime magnets, right? And then how do I kind of get rid of that magnet there, or at least help mitigate? Other softwares that will help me do that, that I'm looking via a federal grant, predictive algorithm, right? Where I would send my officers for X amount of time, and based on that X amount of time, it's pretty advanced, but it's scientific, too. So in the future, I would look to something like that, to do that.
Thank you for the effort and creativity here.
Yeah, try and sir, try. If you look at the next slide, and this looks like a Christmas tree, I apologize, I don't think I decorate my tree this well. But, so this gives you an idea, obviously, with property crime, there's a lot more than violent. And again, a heat map would show this, goes to all these dots. And as I mentioned, on those corridors, you can kind of see, based on your own council district, that density is, or some of those corridors are, based on the dots, right? And a heat map, as well as the one-offs, right? Our good intelligence is going to tell. Somebody might be affecting something on Garfield Avenue, we might have a homeless in camp. Crime looks, I'm sorry, your property crime looks for that time period from January. Any questions on the Part One crime for now? I'm going to break it down into each individual beat as we. If you go to the next slide, I hope you can read this, I know the audience, obviously, they might be able to on those screens. So based on our beats, right, the two beats, or I'm sorry, the three beats that we are up in crime, would be Beat B, Beat C, and Beat F, right? So we're down overall for violent and property in Beat A, four point, four point two-six percent. For Beat B, unfortunately, we're up one hundred and twenty-one crimes versus one hundred crimes, right? Seventeen percent difference, right? A lot of that being in our property crime, twenty-seven percent. You'll see the violent crime in Beat, and Beat C. You'll also see a significant increase in our property crime, right, which is thirty-eight versus fifty this year, right? So twenty-four percent. F, which is Councilmember Miles' district, we're up twenty-one percent for Part One crime. Again, a lot of that being on the property crime, that twenty, that twenty-three percent. That is some new homes that have gone in, right, which causes more. I think that's been going on, a lot more people are out now during COVID, you've got, have an idea what that could be, right? But a lot of it is on the property crime set. As the more residents move in, we might see. Really, I know, once the builder gets to a certain point, maybe seven hundred homes, I can't remember exactly what it was, funding for an initial, a couple of officers. Next slide here, right? So this would be our Beat A, roughly sixty, the boundaries being sixty freeway to the north, Wilcox to the east, Whittier to the south, Simmons to the west, Councilmember Peralta, I think I'd mentioned, a lot of that is your beat. So if I'm looking at trends and patterns, just to look at something like this, right? Again, as I mentioned, Garfield corridor, if you look at twenty-two and twenty-three, if you take that down from Quiet Cannon all the way down, you can circle that, and you can see where we have some anchor points, or some magnets there that kind of take it all the way down. There's also, especially in twenty-two, a little bit less in twenty-three, if you look toward your southeast portion of that area there, over near Montebello High School, over toward Whittier Boulevard, off of Garfield, there are some, also have the high school where kids get out, and they do what kids do, right? So there is a pattern in those particular areas, right? And then there's a breakdown of all the crimes there. What I do find striking is that if you look under property crimes for Beat A, last year at this time, or for that time period, for the quarter three time period, we're looking at two burglaries. This year, we're looking at ten burglaries, which is, I would have to dig a little bit deeper into that and take a look. I think some of that might have been some other commercial stuff. Residential thrown in. The other category to look at there is burglary from motor vehicle, seventeen versus twenty-seven, although we are up overall as a city in burglary from motor vehicle, right? So that's a fifty-eight percent, a fifty-eight percent increase for that. We're going to Beat B on the next slide, boundaries roughly, Viola on the north, Montebello to the east, Whittier to the south, Wilcox to the west. We're looking, if I'm looking to patterns and trends, if you look in the northwest portion, I can draw, I have a circle drawn right there where that Best Buy shopping center is, right? It sticks out. The other cluster that I kind of, I'm seeing, both twenty-two and twenty-three, would be a little more toward the center, but on the east side, which would be, you can see the Starbucks, the Vons, the shopping center, and then toward Taylor and toward that direction, we have some apartment buildings, right? So again, that goes to the density, the crime problems, the crime issues, right? So I'm going to be working with also our dispatch supervisor. We also have repeat locations, right, where we should pay attention to, whether it's the Vons, and they're getting shoplifted a lot, whether it's apartment building, and we're getting multiple calls. Why do we get twenty calls in two months at this one apartment building? Something's going on there, we should be talking to management, we should be going out, educating them if it's a crime issue, or maybe they need to be helped with something, or maybe there's a particular suspect we should be looking for. That's how we should be looking at crime, you know, through different angles. So for that particular beat, that's what we're looking at. Significance, stolen cars over in Beat B are up. If you're looking, if you're looking over property crime, motor vehicle theft, or GTA, fifteen last year, thirty this year, right? So that's a hundred percent increase, an increase of fifteen. And then also, an increase of thefts that we have going. Particular area. So as I go to Beat C, which is our Charlie beat, boundaries being, just for your, these boundaries for your reference, for your own districts. Burke Drive to the north, Lincoln to the east, Whittier to the south, Montebello to the west, right? If I'm looking at the map for twenty-two and twenty-three, I can circle that Beverly corridor all the way down, Councilmember Melendez, right? Basically, to the river, on both ears, to say, I know I have, I have some attraction there for some issues that I need to live in. And some of those anodally, you probably just know from looking at it, right? And then if I go further south there, the same thing, Whittier Boulevard, right? From basically, looks like right there, businesses down, down to the riverbed. What I did notice in twenty-three, that you don't have in twenty-two, over off of Lincoln Avenue, just west of the Montebello Barnyard and the park there, there's a little pattern of property crime there, right? So something happened, either somebody's coming out of that riverbed, or there's a house there that's causing us some issues, or narcotics, or something to that effect was going on in that particular area. Particular vicinity. So going to the next slide, which will be Beat, our Beat D, boundaries, Whittier to the north, Van Norman to the east, Telegraph Road to the south, Greenwood to the west. Councilmember Jimenez, a lot of this is, if I'm looking for patterns or trends, I'm looking at your north, your northeast portion along the riverbed there, in both ears. Twenty-two looked particularly bad. It's still there in twenty-three, however, if you look, again, look at that north portion, you could, cluster of those dots, a cluster of crimes, both property and violent crime, right? If you look toward the middle, off of Washington Boulevard, just east, I'm sorry, west of the riverbed, again, I can draw a circle around the clusters in that particular area where it's thickest. So ma'am, along that five freeway, on the very south end, there's a cluster of property crimes, right? So we know we have issues along our freeway, we know we have issues along our riverbed. Serial affairs is kind of where they're coming in at, it looks like, to causing some of those issues for you, and also the businesses, right? So it's easy pickings for criminals, and we know they can be opportunistic, right? So you have a lot of that. So those are the three areas. Looking for you, ma'am, your, our robberies are up just a little bit from five last year to eight this year, so a difference of three. They have a list of something, something for me to pay attention to. Our sexual offenses up only one, I'm not as concerned about that, again, because we don't have any serial rapists or anything like that going around. You're slightly up a little bit on our stolen cars, right? And I think we've had complaints about that, and even people breaking cars. But we're looking at, from thirty-one last year to forty this year. So I think we have to do as much as we can, a little more education, and trying to work on that. I'll discuss a little bit later on about some of the issues we're dealing with. You already know about the zero bail, and things like that that are going on. All that we're working our way through. I'll explain a little bit more. And I've already gave you, ma'am, I gave you a little bit of the numbers. We hadn't had anything around Rodriguez Park recently, so I think what your neighbors might be hearing, or some shots fired, and maybe some other things aren't getting reported, right? There's a lot of things that go on with gang members or feuds, that don't get reported, but we'll hear about it, or we'll hear about it a different way. But if somebody notices something, please let us know, and we're trying to track it right now. The Beat E, and Councilmember Jimenez, you also, you also have this one, right? I'm looking trends in this particular beat. I'm looking north, off of Northport Olympic Boulevard, on the northeast portion, there is a cluster of dots in that northeast portion there, right? Right off of Olympic Boulevard, actually probably overlaps into another council district, but just, even just a little west of City Park right there, we have a little cluster going on. And that's consistent for both ears, right? Being a business corridor, some residents, and also issues with City Park that we've had in the past. The other cluster I'd be looking at would be along the Greenwood corridor. If you're looking more south on Greenwood in twenty-two, there's something there. And then also, Austin north on Greenwood for twenty-three, we've got a cluster along that. Another major thoroughfare, some apartment buildings, and some other issues going on there that we should pay attention to. For this particular beat, our aggravated assaults are up, although we're down as a city for this particular beat, for some reason, our aggregate of assaults are up from seven crimes last year to eleven crimes, same time period. Burglaries have gone up two from eight, plus, plus two, which is, we never want to have more, but it's less significant than the aggregate. Okay, going on to Beat F, for most of, this is all Councilmember, and the clusters, ma'am, are obvious, right, on the border, right there with our neighbor, where you have that cluster near the shopping center, see a bunch of blue crime, and then just on the other side of the sixty, south of the sixty freeway, are both ears, there are clusters in that particular. This year, you can tell where there's more people have moved in, because there's a little more property crime just south of, just south of there. There's just a little bit more property crime down going on, we've had some people move in. So I think those are, that's some of the issues. If you look at twenty-one, twenty-two, there's nothing south of, no crime, property crime, rather, south of, or east of the shopping center. And then if you look in twenty-three, you go south there, and you can see it going on, right? Okay, so for strategies, I talked a little bit, I won't, not to get too much in, I know we've been going for a while. So if I'm looking to fight crime, as a police officer, as a chief, right, we look at, at basically three things, our victims, our locations, and our suspects, right? How do we help a victim not be a victim? How do we look at the locations that are making them easier access for suspects? What can we do for those locations? What's attracting it, what's creating it? And again, the suspects, who's doing the crime, why they're doing the crime, where they're coming from, right? So if we're talking concentric circles, right, you get something in between, that's kind of what we're going, between, that middle spot, right? So I'm trying to affect all three of those, right, based on my analytical tools, what my officers tell me, and how that's getting communicated back to me. So for now, what we've been doing, just because of, we've had our deployment concerns, where we've been deploying additional overtime details, right? So there have been some graffiti at parks, as far as graffiti is concerned. We'll do overtime details on the murder where we had off of the, near Grant Ray Park and the riverbed. Together, an overtime detail for that also, with some electronic bikes down in the river, with the outside entities. So trying to get as good intelligence as we possibly can. And we did get some good intelligence, again, on the, both on the suspects, the gang members coming over from Pico Rivera, which we were able to talk to, and get some good intel. The sheriffs were able to make some arrests on that murder, as well as the graffiti suspects, right? We're looking for a particular car a couple of different times, which we were able to get. Ma'am, I believe, a Shia Park, you were out there several months back at a meeting at a Shia Park, Councilmember Peralta. After that meeting, one of our officers would make a good arrest when we're both in individual park, creating good graffiti, right? And so some of that's just based on some of the overtime details, as well as our special watches, right? So for this, we'll communicate to our officers via some new technology that we have, where they're able to communicate and post certain items up online, and they can see what's going on, right? And we'll create a special one. Officers know, a couple of different beat officers, two to three of them will try to pull particular area during the workday, in addition to the special details. And those special overtime details, they can be undercover, they can be uniform patrol, it just depends on the issue. Other entities outside, such as Pico Rivera sheriffs, we've worked with Val Gardens, Val Gardens gangs having some issue with our gangs, some of the Pico Rivera gangs. City entities, right, to get some of that graffiti. Nationwide does our graffiti removal, so working with Public Works to find out, hey, are they being as responsive as we need them to be? So, different angles. And then, rest recap, and our anti, I talked a little bit on anti-graffiti, I'll talk a little bit about the other rest recap. Right now, we're limited with some of our abilities to deploy some of this. I'd like to have specialized units to attack these issues, right? So if I had some, for these a little bit more effectively. So take this weekend, right? Say we had some huge crime issue, or graffiti issue was continuing. We had the Heritage Festival, right? We had the Heritage Festival, right? That takes it, that takes overtime. I also had an officer getting married on... Hard for me to, we're limited, right? I've got sixty-nine officers, I'm limited at what... Out there, you know, I just have to be mindful of burning my... As I possibly can, but that's always a concern. So appreciate it for what you've done regarding allowing me at least to add four more. Well, as, you know, the recent contract negotiations that had just happened. That definitely helps the cause with my recruitment efforts. Moving to the next slide, so our community policing efforts. And this is more along the lines of prevention and intervention, right? So I talked a little about suspect, victims, locations, right? There's also the community input and also trying to prevent these crimes or intervene in someone that might prevent these crimes on the front end. We do try to, you know, these crimes, you know, even when you hear about them, I'm hearing about them. The graffiti efforts, you know, we're going through our neighborhood watch meetings. We're hearing the same type of things, right? Just within this time period mention, and actually shorter than that, we've had seven neighborhood watch meetings that I'm going to eventually, I'm turning into neighborhood watch groups. That's not just for me, right? I'm trying to make sure that, tell my... Another city entities, we've got some great directors here. If another city entity needs to be involved, please let me know. Sometimes it's parking, sometimes it's public work, sometimes it's trees need to be cut down so that people aren't drinking up in, you know, in Racket Mountain. Just let me know, and we'll bring them in. We had thirteen community events, such as Coffee with Cop or National Night Out. Again, it's not just to meet and greet, and it is good to build that trust with them, but it's also to get information. It also helps us to be able to communicate back with our community members. So that's quite a bit for a department my size, because again, with deployment issues, each of these events, it takes a lot for us to plan and handle. And I'm happy to do it, and so are my people. But it takes us, it takes us some effort. But I think it's well worth it, because we need to put a lot of it in. As much as I'd like to enforce, we've got to put as much, just as much effort into our intervention, prevention, and our community policing efforts to be effective. So as far as our prevention intervention, we were soon going into an agreement with Alma Family Services. They operate a few different offices out here. They offer family services and a continuum of mental health, parenting, counseling for youth. And obviously several other things that I'm not, that I'm missing here. That we will be able to divert some of our youth as opposed to booking them, right? Should they qualify? If it's an individual, a juvenile that's stopped or arrested for, maybe we're thinking about arresting them for graffiti. He's with two gang members, but the one, the third one is not a gang member, right? And we know he's walking that way. Maybe that's one that we divert instead of sending, putting him into the juvenile justice system. So we've worked with the county on that, and also with Alma Family Services, who would be our contractor for that particular... And that is covered via grant via the county. So I'd like to get kids involved as long as they meet the criteria, right? I don't want to have community in jeopardy, right? So we'll decide on that. But I definitely want to be able to direct a youth to a different direction. So they are available to us, we will... Community Police Academy just started this last Thursday, which is great. I want to say twenty-five individuals in that academy. So we're being able to educate them on police work, how it's done, why it's done, some of the things that you're seeing here. We're trying to pull in, I'm waiting on a grant to buy a force option simulator, which will help our community members, and I'd like the council members to go through also, right? Situation, a de-escalation situation. Or maybe you don't even pull your gun, and maybe you think you should have, or why did you pull your gun? You shouldn't have pulled your gun, right? Not even shoot, no shoot, right? It's a one hundred and eighty-degree screen room. You're given a real gun, obviously. Well, it's, it recoils, it shoots, and it's a pretty real time. Hoping to get that before the end of this next Community Police Academy. You'll be, if you're not the first, you might be the second behind them, but I would invite the council to go there. This year, I'm happy to say our Police Activities League has started their basketball league again, right? Definitely helped this cause. I'd like to expand on that a little bit. Part-time officer that works on that, but she does a great job. She's been doing it for a while. There are other avenues we can possibly explore. With growth efforts, and I don't want to spread myself too thin, but I would, I love the program. I definitely would like to continue with that and expand. And then expansion of our explorer porch, now explorer porch, now that we're out of COVID, right? I think we're up to ten to twelve explorers now. We had gone down to six. We've done quite a few presentations at Montebello High School, Sure High School. Some of the issues that we've, that we're kind of bumping into, I mentioned the deployment concerns, right? So in addition to this, right, the thousands, I'd even put the radio calls on there and break it down. Here, because we are a full-service department, right? We can't, we don't ignore anything, right? You're calling, and we're there. Whatever this community needs, we are there for. We also screen the calls for the fire department. So before they go to Verdugo, those calls come in here, right? So our... So I had mentioned the zero bail, which I think on, just as a matter of public safety. In my opinion, the zero bail... I believe is what they're calling it. As constructed, is not the right way to go about it. Say that the most equitable way to do it is a cash bail. However, with certain individuals, if that's the only thing that might help keep an individual from going back out in the streets for next thirty to forty-five days, on the ones that we know, as a, people that I know as a police officer, are going to be back out there again, right? We should probably hold them. Like, I'm good if the system defaults so that the judge, everything goes to a judge, and they decide, based on our feedback, based on victims' feedback, and based on the suspect's criminal history, bail, no bail, right? And then we wouldn't have to worry about it, right? That is out of our hands. So right now, the system, the way it's built, is very cumbersome. It's very labor-intensive. It takes a long time for our officers to get done. We are trying, right? But again, we're limited with our resources here. So again, as constructed, I would not advise, I would not, I would advise the city to take a stance against it. I've advised the county, this is not the way to go in this manner. If I were to look, if I looked at their stats, right, for this year, say twenty-nine percent recidivism rate, which, okay, you say, that's not bad, and based on their stats, it's gone down the last, the last three years, right? I absolutely know, right? And it's a hard fact that ten percent of our population is committing ninety percent of the crime. Those are the ones we'd rather hold until their court date. Obviously, if we could see a judge within the twenty-four hours, right? If we had night court or twenty-four hour court, that would be the optimal. Then the judge decides. That's why I'm saying, just let the judge decide on all of them. We don't have that system, right? And to put this individual back out in the street is not safe, because we know what those, we know what they look like. We know, and again, it's, it's hard to say without someone being in the line of work, right? And some people are just, in some incidents, right? There's just, sometimes there's evil in this world, right? And we, as police officers, we see that, and the public doesn't unless you're victimized by it. Those are the individuals that I'm talking about, right? Again, there needs to be a fair and equitable system. The way it's going, it's being done right now, and the way it's been rolled out is not effective. So we are dealing with that in addition to our deployment issues. That brings me to the end of my presentation. I do appreciate your support, everything you can do to support us. And I try to be mindful with my requests, I haven't asked for a lot. I will have some requests coming up for some emergency items that we will need. Some batteries for our dispatch that are critical. Our computer terminals are not working for our cars because they're old, and they're not matching up with newer technologies. We have the in-car video systems, and the systems are just too much for the computers. Oh, our first floor is still kind of in shambles. We worked through some things, but peeling back the onion, we found several, several other issues, right? So that, I just, it's hard for me to close my eyes on that, and it's hard for me to recruit officers, but I don't have that, right? If you have a teenage child, right, and they're good at sports, if they can play football at a junior college somewhere, or they go University of Oregon, right? They're going to go to Oregon. Well, it's a good program, but there, those, the facilities, the everything, the overall vibe definitely helps in recruitment, too. In addition, basic needs that we need here for our officers. And just showers to have, because we're dealing with toxic waste, you know, every other day, right? We don't even have that. And I appreciate your support and all that you do. I appreciate the community here for supporting its police department, and I'll do everything in my power to try to maintain crime levels that are acceptable, if not try to get rid of it all. But I'd like to open myself up to questions from the council.
Thank you very much. Chief Espinoza, for the presentation, it was well worth the wait. Opening up to my colleagues for questions or comments, starting with Mayor Proton Peralta.
Yes, first off, just want to really thank you for this presentation, and thank you for kind of in the beginning explaining, you know, where the data was received and just understanding that this was actually, the maps were actually drawn manually. And so I really appreciate you and your team's effort in being able to display this information to us as we work in our migration, data migration efforts, and acquiring just better services and systems. I think this was extremely an important exercise for us as council to just be able to understand, you know, where we see these hotspots when it comes to crime, to better be able to understand where our resources, resources can appropriately go. And so I think, you know, being able to see in my district how theft and burglary is something that is of a concern, being able to work with our residents and being able to understand what more we can do in regards to prevention and education, as well as how we can support our officers, is, I think, really important and puts that perspective in front of us. We see a lot of, a lot of this on social media as far as folks posting about burglaries and theft and crimes, and being able to just see it on a map and understand it, I think was a really great exercise for us. I do want to commend your department in regards to just some of the efforts that are being made on a community level. It's showing, you know, being able to see our police officers, our dispatchers, our personnel at our, at our community events is really awesome. Being able to see their social media and how they interact with the community, I think is great, and being able to build that trust and relationship that we want to see in Montebello. And, you know, some of these, bringing back some of these initiatives, such as the Citizen or the Community Police Academy, I know is something that our residents have really wanted. And I think that the showing of twenty to twenty-five folks in that first session shows. And we have, you know, eager residents that want to help, want to find a better way to contribute to their community, and being able to offer them these spaces helps us, I think, overall, to have residents that are informed, that are able to assist, I think is how we just build a better community. I do just have two questions, and this is more of just general information for those that might be watching and that are interested. In regards to neighborhood watch meetings, how should a resident go about requesting those in their, in their area?
They can go online and email any one of my lieutenants their information. Or they can email me direct, right? They can get ahold of me, right? And that would be fantastic, you know? We're always looking to get more involved. If they can get, you know, four, five members together, we'll head out there and we'll put something together for them, right? And try to keep them engaged, so. And I didn't even, there's a lot of things I didn't touch on here for time period, right? But it's not just having one meeting, it's making sure that my lieutenants are following up with that particular neighborhood watch group to keep them engaged. And not just for these purposes of engagement, but is there anything you need from us, anything else going on, right? We've had issues on bail, we're working on an issue. Car-type facility, right? But again, we don't just want to have the one meeting. We want to make sure, are there more meetings going on? Do you want to continue with the neighborhood, even if it's once a quarter? I'm good with once a quarter, and some people might need more than once a quarter. Some people might need every other month. Please have them get ahold of me directly, right? I usually, I'll either respond, or ninety percent of the time, I'll respond. A lot of, sometimes I'll send it out to a lieutenant or the assistant chief or a captain.
Thank you, yeah. And I do want to commend your efforts with just the help that we've gotten at AShea Park and being able to meet with residents there and really taking action on, you know, I think earlier you said, you know, even just being able to clean and cut shrubbery. And that really just did help deter crime for folks that were hiding, you know, near their homes and doing things that we're not supposed to be doing. And so I really appreciate the fact that you guys do take action and do do that continuous follow-up with our residents. And then my last question, just in regards to our Community Police Academy. How does recruitment work? And how many times a year would, I guess, how can folks apply past this first session?
Yeah, so that was one of my goals, to get this back going. And we haven't had one for probably like three years now, right? So we've been recruiting at our neighborhood watch meetings, as well as in Coffee with the Cops and anywhere else that we possibly could. And I want to say we even put that posted online. So anybody interested, again, just email me direct. I have a community relations officer pulled up that, you know, I only have one right now. I've had three when I got here. So she can create a list, right? And get that together for our next academy. At least twice a year, if the list gets big, I don't mind creating, you know, having to put together another, put one, you know, three times a year if need be, depending on the interest.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all the feedback, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Peralta. And before moving on to Councilmember Jimenez, if Steph could please pull up maybe one of the informational slides here for council to view as we go along our comments. Maybe the city map of 2022 to 2023, that side-by-side comparison. But Councilmember Jimenez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chief Espinoza. This is actually a lot more than I expected. So this is very refreshing to see, not all the numbers and everything, but just that we're able to see this. And I want to thank some of the residents in the south side. I don't know if Rosemary's here for actually hosting this neighborhood watch meeting recently. This would have been great to be able to show them. I know that often, yes, we do hear a lot of shootings down in the south side, and we don't necessarily know where they're coming from. However, it is, it's scary, right? It's scary, because I've actually seen guys running down my street. And I know that some of the neighbors think that these numbers would probably be a lot bigger. But it's really great to see this, and that we're able to present this to the community and if, and when we choose to move forward with hosting these community meetings. I have gotten a lot of really positive feedback, actually, from some members in the community as well, because we are seeing a lot more officers down in the south side. I mean, that doesn't change the fact that, you know, these guys, whoever's out there committing these crimes are going to be out there. But it is really nice to see that some of our officers are, well, that we now see them in the south side more, more often than before.
Yeah, and so, you know, ma'am, we're still looking to, as we grow, to put a, I guess we could call it a substation, right? But I talked about the Police Activities League. I wouldn't mind putting something at Park, something like that for kids, as well as to be able to work as a substation. Again, that takes hours. So I've been racking my brains on trying to build that up. As far as recruiting efforts, we're down ten right now still. However, there's, there's people coming in, right? So I have two laterals, one's starting next week, another's starting in two weeks. I also have two graduating the academy next week. I have, I'm sorry, next month, and I have three going into the academy in a month. Also have another officer being, what we call a pre-service, which means he has, he has experience. He just never finished probation. We have another one started, I just swore him in today, right? So seven moving, I got about three to get off probation or training. They're out training right now. Three that'll be getting off probation very, very soon, in the next, I'm hoping the next two to three weeks, right? So those... So those officers will be able to work by themselves, so that helps. So although we still have those vacancies, I have people coming, so it's looking good, right? So seven coming in real soon. I did lose one to Santa Ana Unified School District. I spoke to the officer, very happy here, his wife works in Santa Ana. It wasn't for money because we paid more, it wasn't because of any, it's because for family issues to have a Monday through Thursday regular schedule stations, right? So that is hard for me to control, right? So, but we're definitely working to, to try to put more, more down. I do recognize the voices that I've heard.
And thank you for bringing that substation up, because I know always, I didn't want to bring it up right now, but thank you, because it is something that the residents often ask about. It's, it's, it's a big deal down there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Melendez.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of comments. It's, this presentation is great, very useful in gaining the data, data's important. I know we, earlier this year, we had a town hall with some residents and you yourself, chief, along with your team, was able to bring some data. And when the residents hear about the data and see the, the, the facts of crime, I think it, their perspective changes, right, of where they live and, and the actual crime in the area. So I want to thank your team for that. Additionally, every time there's a, some type of safety issue that a resident brings up, I invite them to speak with you, speak with PD, have a town hall, and it is, you're always willing, your team is always willing, and the report that we're building with the community is, we can definitely see it. District policing, great idea, absolutely, has been a great response with the community to be able to have somebody there. And, you know, I, I know you talked about zero bail in regards to, I just want to get your thoughts on the whole depopulation of LA County jail students, see what impact and effect that can have on many of our communities. I know it's a conversation that many of the cities around us are having, because it can definitely have an impact on us, but I'd like you to share a little bit more and see.
Yes, so as far as the, the lawsuit or the injunction that triggered this, right, there was some state legislation, but it, it was more as a result of the lawsuit, right? Nothing in that says necessarily how it needs to be done. A lot of it has to do with, as far as the jails, as far as the conditions, right, that the sheriffs need to clean up. And those are, in my mind, what I read, those are budgetary issues, right? So that's up to the county, the supervisors to prioritize that, I'm not telling them what to do, just, just based on me reading the actual legislation. There is some, some overcrowding. So the answer, and this also goes to the prison system, the answer for the overcrowding has been to release or, or close jails or prisons. I'm not sure if that's necessarily the right answer. The fix might be with, and again, I'm no, I'm not an expert necessarily on the correctional system, but fixing the system itself, right? So that we, maybe we have different levels or different tiers, or maybe we have to build more, and I, I know that's difficult just to find the communities, and I'm not saying we incarcerate everyone. Maybe there just needs to be different levels and different services provided within those systems, right? Because that's a lot of what those, it's the conditions that we had our prisoners in, right? And that goes to a, a lack of, of funding. And as Ms. Huldus Sully said, hey, it's out of our control, well, yes and no, right, when I was at that meeting? Because it goes from county, it goes from us here, it goes to county, it goes to the state legislature on, on the priorities, and, and now we're just in a spot where, I want to say up until recently, maybe last year, year and a half, we had like close to 14,000 inmates in our county jail. I want to say that population is down to about 12,000 approximately. And that, just talking to Sheriff Luna himself, right, those 12,000, he's all, I've, I've looked at, at everyone, right? We might be able to release maybe 100 to a couple, 200 to 300, right? But they want us to release, you know, a, a couple thousand more, that's, that's a scary thought, right? So I don't know if that's necessarily the answer. I will say that, as I mentioned earlier, on, on, on the zero bail, yeah, money bail is not the answer, right? Although the California constitution, even the US constitution allows for bail, but it should be up to the judge based on our feedback, based on the victim's feedback and the suspect's criminal history. So I don't know, maybe there's a risk assessment tool that you, that a judge could use in addition to the input that we would provide, right, on, on, on the suspect or the victim's fear, right? Someone, I've had my house broken into, I've had my catalytic converter stolen, I've had, you know, so I, I've been victimized, right, especially someone going through my house. I don't want that person, I don't want to know that that person's out, right? You feel violated when, when that necessarily happens. So that's why I think, you know, the, a risk assessment tool, having a judge decide, getting our feedback, right, are, are in part some of the answers, I think, from county chiefs on that particular topic. LAPD and sheriffs were in on the conversation a little bit, but county chiefs were not in on that, right? To represent Montebello, to represent Whittier, to represent Manhattan Beach, right? We were not in it for our community, so I think that's where the county supervisors fell a little bit short.
Yeah, and then, and just the last comment I'll make is, that point has been brought up with our county supervisors is that when decisions like this are taking place, to include you all, include the experts in the field. So when it comes to zero bail, depopulation, all that, it's extremely important to get the feedback from all of you. So that point has been brought up and there has been a discussion to make sure that you're all included when these decisions are being made or when they're going to be implemented, because just putting them on us like that, you know, it's, it's, it's extremely, we're in a, we're reacting, right? So it's, it's difficult for us to put a good plan together when, when that's coming along without planning ahead. Thank you.
Councilmember Thamayo.
Thank you so much for the very detailed presentation. I know it was interesting for me to look at the hotspots and relay that to, you know, what I see going on in the community and, and how they match up. So that was, that was good information. And also your proactive approach, I appreciate that, I appreciate you going out to our community and asking how they're doing and having your events, that brings the community also to you. So that's very much appreciative, I think we need to continue that as much as possible to get their feedback. And also the increase in, on the explorer program and the interest for our police department and looking to enhance that and move forward with the improvements there. So I appreciate your focus on helping the police department, which helps us continue moving forward here. And your willingness, again, to, to work with our, the council in addressing the issues that we see, because the community will come to us sometimes and, you know, will go to you. So thank you for taking our, our concerns and addressing them and helping us.
You're welcome. And thank you once again, chief, for the extensive presentation. If staff could please go to the slide that compares 2022 and 2023, both property and violent crimes in the table. So in this table, particularly looking at violent crimes, at sex offenses and aggravated assaults, we see a significant drop, one of 55% and one of 21, 22%. I guess my question is, is that this seems like a pretty significant and precipitous drop? Is this something that, or what causes would you say are behind these numbers? I imagine that part of it is COVID, things opening up, there was a lot of concerns about people that would be quarantined together and, and what kind of things that would happen where kids weren't going to school or people weren't going to work. City has also made significant investments in our public safety, could you speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, and, and I think on, on the sexual assaults, as far as the forcible rapes, we're actually down, because this includes all penetration with a foreign object, other sodomy, other, other issues are also included on it. I, I would agree that people are out and about more, right? So like, and take our aggravated assaults, right, from 180 to, to 148, that is, that is significant. A good portion of that, I know, is domestic, not all of it, but is domestic violence related? That's a good thing, right? So not as many people working at home, some businesses are taking them back, there's more employment now, right, where, as you mentioned, you're kind of stuck in a house together for a long time. So those are some, antidoteably, some of the reasons, right? Ideally, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, this is just kind of just scratching the surface of what I'm used to, I, I'm used to tracking daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, yearly, right? And I can break that down 50 different ways, so I, you know, I, in, in having a certain goal, right? So that if I know my average number of burglaries for a week is, 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 is 10 for that last year, my, my goal for this year is going to be eight, right? So why am I over, what caused it over, what was more, what area, right? So I plan as I move forward, please, my people bear with me, right? Because I'm, you know, I'm, I'm kind of, I've got, I've got the whip out because I need to see things, I need to see them live. I do have my, to look at these patterns and trends. Over the last couple of months, I've, my watch commanders are now reporting part one crime to me daily, because I've had some automated field reporting issues where reporting was not catching up because of kickbacks online and kickbacks via our records, right? So say an aggravated assault, someone tries to attack, runs at you with a knife, right? It, it gets reported to one of our officers, it's on his, his, last day he's working Tuesday, he gets a kickback from the sergeant, he doesn't get back until the next Sunday, and then he sends it back up, while then, by next, by that, next Monday, records kicks it back to the sergeant, who then kicks it back to the officer on the next Tuesday, and that report is two weeks late, right? So I'm working to make that live to be able to answer these questions. Already with that daily reporting, right, there's an entire spreadsheet. My watch commanders are also, for their own good, are getting good intelligence, right? They're catching patterns, hey, we're having a lot of cars broken into over in BE on the South End, in this particular area. We're able to see that live. Ideally, once I get my systems cleaned up and my reporting, I will be, I told them, we, we can automate this, we shouldn't have to report that on an old spreadsheet, but I need to know that because you need, I mean, our community needs for their own safety, right, to be, answer those questions. So I absolutely recognize kind of, kind of what you're saying. So for a question like that, I have to, like, I know a lot of that is domestic violence, because I did look at some of it. For the other breakdowns, I've got to learn, okay, what's, whether, was there commonality in the suspects, was there commonality in the victims, was there a particular locations, particular area, was there something going on, was there a, a three-day festival, where we had four at one time? There's a lot of different ways to, to look at this, right? And I'm, I guess I'm more analytical than I ever thought I was, but now that, you know, having been in an executive position for like 10 years now, I've learned how to dig deeper to answer those, those, those particular questions. And that's what I'm working, for, for good reason, right? Not just because I want to know, for the same reasons you want to know, why is that happening, right? And so I, I'm working on that diligently, like, to put this, you could, you should have seen me and my people, like, literally, I was like pulling out my hair, wait a minute, I have to be accurate, I need to have my numbers. So I recognize that, and I'm, I'm working on that just about daily, and my people will let you know that.
And understanding that there's still a significant number of victims, we are very fortunate to see these kinds of drops in some of these types of crime. Would you say that some of the activity that we're seeing, and I mean, they're very modest increases in thefts and burglaries under property crimes, but would you, to your knowledge, are these gang-related or, or by individuals?
No, but a lot of by individuals. We know we've seen an increase in our, in our homeless population, right? And trying to take opportunities that they can to help themselves survive, as well as the way our, our security at our stores is now handling this, there are a lot more hands off, so they're allowing it to happen. So that tends to encourage it. We talked a little bit about this, about the zero bail. Also with the, like, the auto burglaries and the cars, right? That kind of does affect things also, some of the things that we're talking about now, right? Because some of those people, same individuals who might come up and do a theft will also burglarize from a car. If we're talking like the gang members, the narcotic suspects, right? They're coming up, they'll break into a car and leave. If it's a stolen car, right now, our officers are trying, we've, we've, we've done really well with, with arrest of people in stolen cars. However, my direction is to the officers, right? Once they speed up away from you or they pass a red light, they're, they're, they're not to pursue or to call the pursuit off, right? Reason being, right now, as it stands, most of the time that's a site out, right? So that person, it's, it's just a ticket, it's not worth them putting themselves in danger, them putting, the suspect in danger, the community in danger for something that's only going to be a ticket, right? That car will be recovered somewhere in Commerce or wherever it might have you, right? But, but we'll never get a person's life recovered or, 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 you know, somebody get, somebody getting hurt. So those are some of the issues that kind of we're, we're dealing with and to answer your question, right? So there's a, there's a combination of, of concerns that are going on with, with the thefts. And so what I think Councilmember Peralta had seen and heard in her area, it's kind of consistent with, with, with what we're getting with the crime numbers.
Thank you, chief. And that, in some ways, segues into, I think, something more of a comment than a question. And then, and then a question is, through solicitations and email, we receive, you know, dozens, hundreds a year from various vendors, but one of the things that has caught my attention that I've been curious about is graffiti tracking software, tracking individuals, where their activities are, how often that those occur. So as a general request, and if I need to get consensus from my colleagues, happy to do so, but just looking into that kind of technology and if the department sees a value in the costs and rewards in that kind of tracking technology. I know with the My Montebello app and being able to report graffiti, there's already basically a treasure trove of images that might be able to be imported and analyzed, but also just on a going-forward basis, you know, other ways of reporting, you know, if staff could look into that. But that does go into my next question. So you mentioned that, that we currently have 69 officers, you also mentioned that you would like to start some specialized units. So as a general question, I was just curious, at what point in our force do you see those specialized units being created and filled?
Hoping by the end of this fiscal year, based on what I have, the numbers that I have coming in and the recruitment that has, has definitely improved since like July, I would say probably by the end of this fiscal year, I'd be able to, I'm, the first thing I'm going to do is try to, I've already augmented my tra, a lot of our concerns are traffic-related, so I'm putting two back in traffic now. But the next two to go roughly specialize, I'm putting an additional two into detectives. I can't create an entirely special problems or narcotics unit, but I can add two additional that might be able to work in another cover capacity under the detective sergeant, right, under the mentoring of them, and then eventually grow that out to four or five officers and then put a supervisor over that particular, that specialized, specialized work. So I'm hoping by the end of, my goal would be by the end of this fiscal year.
Thank you very much, chief. And yeah, and as you mentioned, it sounds like there's somewhere between six to 10 officers that we can, you know, kind of expect to be onboarded in the next year, which I think our community should be very proud and excited about. I would like to give a special thanks for acknowledging the concerns that council has expressed in terms of traffic and safety and restarting that activity and, and that Just two final comments here. One, I would like to reiterate the importance of our neighborhood watch meetings. As it was mentioned, that they are great sources to, I think, one, demystify some of the operations of our police department, also some of the things that we may hear or see and wonder about and never really know. They are also fantastic opportunities to kind of gain some real data backing what those observations are. A lot of times the things that happen at the end of our driveway are of great significance to us and may be overrepresented in our minds as, as opposed to what may be really happening. What I would ask that staff consider, and of course, being sensitive to the residents that host these, becoming potential targets or, or not wanting their information exposed, but perhaps we could ask them if we could advertise those meetings on the My Montebello app. I think that there's a lot of opportunities to create a more robust presence and notification system through our My Montebello app. Some of our residents do a fantastic job of bringing out the community and inviting their neighbors, others not so much. I personally am aware of the times that our community reaches directly out to me, so, you know, seeing those, those reminders and opportunities might encourage a few more people to come out, so I would encourage us to, to make full use of that technology. And lastly, I would request that, moving forward for this presentation and other present, other significant presentations that council- for this presentation and other significant presentations that council receives and Ms. Salazar, we can maybe determine a scheme for this. But this is great information for all of the community to have. Our media team does a great job of sending out, I believe, the weekly newsletters. And I know, at least for the mail service that I use, MailChimp, there's a way to create PDFs and link them in emails. So perhaps, so it'd be great if we could start seeing this presentation and other presentations pushed out to the community through those regular updates. And then perhaps even a timestamp to our YouTube videos and where they can find the speeches and questions on these presentations. But if there are no other questions or comments, Chief, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Mr. City Attorney, if you can please read the statement of public oral communications.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the public may submit speaker cards to the city clerk's staff for both agenda and non-agenda items prior to the beginning of this meeting. Public hearing items do not require a speaker card. The city council will address non-agenda items during this section, and speakers will be called in the order received. Those persons not accommodated during this thirty-minute period will have an opportunity to speak under "Public Comments Continued", after all scheduled matters have been considered. Public hearing, regular business, and/or consent calendar items will be addressed at the time that the matter of business is heard in the order received. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. State law prohibits the city council from taking action or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all your comments to the mayor and city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tapia. Mr. Clerk, are there any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a few speaker cards for tonight.
Please proceed.
First speaker is Fiona Remers, followed by Margot Isner.
Counsel, just wanted to, oh, I'm Fiona Remers, Community Library Manager. And I wanted to invite everyone to get involved at the library. A full opportunity for anyone who wants to help us out by receiving our book donations, pricing them, going through them, and any books that the library sells through this Friends of the Library helps go toward funding for more interesting, more wonderful educational programs for everyone. So please consider joining the, our new Friends of the Library.
Next speaker is Margot Isner, followed by Rosa Tamayo.
Okay, try to keep it three minutes because that's all I got. Okay, first of all, we're not an audience, correction. We are the people of the city, residents and others, who want to participate in the running of a city and knowing the business of our city. Secondly, I got a property tax bill today, huge amount, of which almost half of it is for ass and services, pickup services. It's a good service, but I'd rather see a lot more of that go to education. Number three, I really think we have a very, very good acting city manager, and I really recommend that this person be made into the actual city manager and better continue her good work. Three, I really appreciate that. After I spoke last time at the meeting, I got a call from a city employee in the Public Works Department actually asking to clarify what I wanted to, what I just was talking about, and then to follow through on that. It's really very, 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 very appreciated that I'm a citizen and resident, et cetera. Now, number three, or four, whatever number it is, I'm trying to keep it three minutes. And the second thing, third thing, is that since we're fortunate enough to be able to get the actual remainder of what used to be the golf public park in order to protect us, the residents in the area, from what, maybe some of the crimes and things like that. Okay, thank you. Now, I didn't have a rehearsal, so the fact that we have, will have this public park and since the police officers like to see some rules made that would actually vent and restrict and enforce, that would restrict houseless people from hanging out there and make other appropriate, more appropriate areas in the city officially designated where they could hang out, maybe better housing and things like that. Third, fourthly, or fifthly, or sixthly, I want to say that I really like the idea of having an Arbor Day here in the city, and I would like to have it be really, really, really actually by having, working with the tree people. And it would save a huge amount of money that we actually enforce and really make sure that all, any trees, natural, native trees and other trees are not mutilated, but only, it would save a lot of money, I have to emphasize this, that they are being kept and trimmed only in the most way that preserves and protects their natural way of growth. And this would make the city much more attractive. It would be providing more oxygen and carbon dioxide absorption, et cetera. So that would be something to work with, and I hope that the tree people have the advice. I saw something posted on Facebook, and I was going to send it around, but it didn't. It was another city doing it, were saying we must actually keep the trees in the natural form. And it's, that's a really important thing. So I know that it's important that we all work together to keep this and make this special place.
Next speaker is Rosa Tamayo, followed by Linda Nicholas.
Good evening, my name is Rosa Tamayo. I'm a community activist. Mayor David Torres, a member of the city council. I understand that the interpreter is no longer here. Know that I'm just not, just another person. You are breaking the laws of the interpreter, which she was here to do and translate for me. If you continue with breaking the law, the civil law, you're going to have to hear from me.
Ms. Tamayo, very quickly. Mr. Jimenez, so I would, you know, agree with Ms. Tamayo to a certain extent that translations should be done by someone that is somewhat qualified or certified to provide in Spanish or in a foreign language in general. So Ms. Salazar, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that the city has essentially certified, you know, that's fluent in Spanish, to provide translation services in this instance? Mr. Tapia, do you have any advice on how we can proceed?
Well, I'm unaware of any rule or policy that prohibits or that requires a specific person with certain qualifications to be the interpreter. The record's going to speak for itself. Mrs. Tamayo is speaking at a public meeting. The interpreter here and/or the clerk who's interpreting on her behalf, it's on the record. So I'm not so concerned that there will be an allegation that he's not interpreting it accurately based on, this is a public meeting that's being recorded. So I'm not so concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Tapia. You can proceed, Ms. Tamayo.
I like to do things with evidence. My friend Guadalupe and I visited various facilities of housing. We noticed that the construction workers that are building homes are... That the homes that the construction workers are building are not accessible to families. Are you looking at what is going on? For the interpretation? We look at things if families are going to be able to be living in these households properly. The construction workers want to build more homes, but with a very minimal space. It's too much for children and for people to be climbing and descending. Some of these homes are built with the first floor being the garage. Then there's a set of stairs that leads into the kitchen. Then another set of stairs that leads into the room. This becomes a lot of stairs for families who have kids. There are two sets of stairs that are too inclined in these buildings. You need to look at when homes are being constructed, that families are not... You need to also be aware and be mindful of those families that have seniors living in their households. And it's going to be very dangerous for kids as well. You may think, oh, why does Rosa Tamayo care? She's saying that she does care. When I visit the families, because I am a community activist, I realize how these families are living. What conditions they are living in. I notice everything and take note of everything. Right now that Police Chief Espinoza gave you the presentation, I notice that he's doing a really great job at what he's doing. Because I take kids, I take kids to the park from different families and while they're, while those families are working. And I do notice that our that our police department is very aware, they're always patrolling the park, and they're very aware of anything that is going on in our community. Rosa Tamayo is very aware of everything that's going on.
Ms. Tamayo, thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Very quickly, I would just like to note that 2023 is, and this is for the benefit of the audience that's watching and attending. 2023 is the first year that we've offered professional translation services. It's something that we've sought as long as I've been on council since 2019. So, you know, this, what we've seen over the last year has definitely been a big step forward. So credit to the city clerk for pitching in this evening and those staff members that have provided translation services in the past.
Thank you, Mayor. And our final speaker for today is Linda Nicholas.
Good evening, my address is on file. My name is Linda Nicholas. I'd like to address the comments of a woman that came up here quoting the Bible on one breath and then continuing to spew hatred in another, doing personal attacks on community members in her personal capacity. Ironic, she's a MSU Personnel Commissioner. Due to the letters that were recommended, she asked former Mayor Cobos Calthen to write, and myself, to write on her behalf. Her husband also asked the former mayor to write a letter for a letter recommendation for the position he wanted for the chief of security for the Narwhal La Marada School District, which he received and was given, which, per my understanding, is no longer with the department. Guess when she needed the letter back then, she didn't hate us. Maybe I should send the video of her when she was up here criticizing the city for having personnel commissioners in favor of civil service commissioners.
Ms. Keon, can you please pause the time? I would just like to quickly ask the city attorney, I believe, I don't, well, I might be mistaken, but I believe public comments are for a subject matter within the city council's jurisdiction.
They're my three minutes. It's my First Amendment rights according to the ACLU.
Right, but I don't know if another member's comments for a different board that is not within the city's jurisdiction.
Mr. City Attorney, may I ask you something? Why is it okay, when that person comes up here and attacks us, the mayor allows them to make those physical attacks against us, community members, that aren't happy with the votes that they're doing? I'll give you an example. When we came up here to criticize, I'm asking the city manager, the city attorney.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your question, just asking for clarification.
That is correct. Public comments are supposed to be focused on matters within the agency's subject matter jurisdiction. And if there's a way you could wrap it into making it a part of the subject matter jurisdiction?
This person came up and was applauding the fact that they, that she was criticizing that the city had personnel commissioners and in favor of civil service. And she is in fact a Monobello Unified School District Personnel Commissioner. And ironic, you know, let me finish my comment. You, Mr. Torres, allow certain people to use this council meeting as a forum to attack community members that come up here and criticize and speak out when you give votes, which are our First Amendment rights, we have the right to do this. I'll give you an example. When you three voted to reinstate the IE contract for no reason, even though they were banned by Caltrans, and you three voted to pay back the $429,000 that Caltrans fined the city of Monobello because of the inappropriate, they double-billed for products, for material, for rentals, and they hadn't even started the project. And the auditors found that none of the things that they had written in their report were found credible. They gave the city a letter, they warned you guys last year, you guys, this prior council fired them. But you three brought them back because they gave you three donations for your campaign. Those three donations cost us, the taxpayers, us, the taxpayers, $429,000. When we come up here and talk about it, we get attacked. You allow that. Yet when we say something, you ask the city attorney. Why didn't you ask them when she was up here spewing things against us? Bias?
Mayor, that does conclude all speaker cards for tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Clerk, and thank you to all of our public commenters this evening. Moving on to staff communications on items of community interest, Ms. Salazar.
Mayor, I'd just like to congratulate the community for another well-attended Heritage Festival this past weekend. We had over, I want to say it was sixteen thousand at our high point at our Heritage Festival. So I want to congratulate our community for coming and participating on that and for staff for organizing that and for council for supporting it. and for staff for organizing that and for council for supporting another community engagement activity. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salazar, and congratulations to staff on another fantastic event. Great lineup of music and food, and I hope that our community was able to enjoy it. If you didn't catch it this year, you can keep an eye out for it possibly next year. And moving on to the consent calendar, Mr. City Attorney, if you can please help me pull the council.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are moving to the consent calendar. I will ask members of the council if they would like to pull any items off of the consent calendar, starting with Mayor Protem Peralta.
No items.
Councilmember Jimenez?
No items.
Councilmember Melendez?
No items.
Councilmember Tamayo?
No items.
And Mayor Torres?
No items.
So with that being said, all items for the consent calendar are up for approval. Mr. City Attorney, do we have to individually list or read them?
Are you asking if we have to list every item on the consent calendar?
Yeah.
No, no, no. You could, someone can make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you very much.
I'll make the motion to approve all items.
Thank you very much, Ms., Councilmember Melendez. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mayor Protem Peralta, Mr. City Clerk.
Mayor Protem Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Torres?
Aye. And for the second week in a row, the entire council agenda is passed with unanimous consent. Moving on to AB 1234 travel reports, looking across the dais if there is anyone that has anything to report. Seeing none, we'll move over to council agency orals. And Mayor Protem Peralta, you have the floor.
Yes, so my first oral is to seek consensus, council consensus for the celebration of Arbor Day 2024 through a proclamation and planned activities. I just, for the past few meetings, have been expressing just the vitality and the importance behind trees and urban forestry and how they really play a role in enhancing our community's quality of air, reducing heat island effects and providing habitat for our wildlife. Not only does this allow us to beautify our landscape, but it just contributes to a sense of well-being and community pride. I do understand that we have in the past done events around Arbor Day and Earth Day. But I would like, I don't think I've, I've seen the city actually do a proclamation and really commit itself to the importance of urban forestry within our community. And so just want to see council consensus to have a proclamation done for Arbor Day with planned activities. I know some cities drew a drawing contest so that engages our children in regards to the importance of urban forestry, tree planting of these, of trees in our parks, and also the opportunity to give away trees. I know that some cities in partnership with Edison Tree People United States Green Building Council are able to supply anywhere from 10 to 20 trees for the, you know, first 10 to 20 participants that they have volunteering that day. Again, being able to provide these opportunities, engagement opportunities for our children and overall education on the importance of trees and urban forestry is something that I would like to see our council commit to. So I would just like to seek consensus for a proclamation with planned activities for 2024 Arbor Day. If I can, if, I guess the roll call?
First, I'll just ask if our colleagues have any questions or comments. And seeing none, Mr. City Clerk, if we can take a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor Protem Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez? Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Torres?
Aye.
Thank you so much to my colleagues for that support. And then second is in regards to a status report. I know that council did give consensus earlier in the year in regards to a partnership with Tree People. They work with various local cities in providing free trees to our community, tree management, care and educational awareness activities. Just, just requesting for a status update and next steps on that item.
At this time, I'd like to invite Rita Montalvo, who has been communicating with Tree People at this time.
Mayor Protem and city council members. I had the opportunity to talk to Tree People and actually they have very good programs and I'm very excited for us to start a partnership with them. So right now I have requested some information. What is it that the city needs to do in, in order to establish a partnership? So my understanding is that we need to submit a letter requesting to them that we want to partner with them. And then, and then after they grant the approval, then we can start the process. So right now I'm waiting for them to send me an email as far as all the guidelines, like a standard, the letter standard, that we can submit to them. So if it's okay with you, in city council member, as soon as I get the letter to start the process.
Yes, absolutely. I believe council did give consensus in the past to formalize that partnership. So you have our full support on that end. I do appreciate that, that status update and would definitely appreciate if council could just be kept in the loop as far as the, the steps that we take to formalize that partnership.
Sure, we'll do that.
Thank you so much. And my next item is in regards to Community Emergency Resistance Program. And so a question that was posed to me during the Naleo Emergency Policy Institute that I attended, the training, that I would like to pose to our community and those that are watching is if a, you know, magnitude 6.5 earthquake strikes Monobello or anywhere near Monobello, causing widespread damages, power outages, road closures. Many buildings are damaged, people are injured, and emergency responders are overwhelmed and unreachable. If your home, family or neighborhood was affected, would you know what to do? And I very much humbly, humbly said, I do not know what to do. And I think that many of us are in that situation when we are not able to receive assistance from our emergency responders during a devastating earthquake or climate-related situation. Knowing what to do is extremely important. And so one of the items that we did discuss was bringing community emergency response team programs, training programs to our community that teach our community emergency preparedness disaster, disaster response skills. And these programs really embrace the concept of neighbors helping neighbors, which I believe this is something that Monobello has, has really tried to do throughout the various different programs that, that we've seen throughout the years. So basically, this is a free training that combines 20 hours of classroom, classroom learning and hands-on training. Again, students or participants learn anywhere from rescue techniques, disaster medicine, fire suppression, anything that they would need in order to be able to activate their, their families as well as their neighbors when it comes to some sort of devastating emergency situation. Cities like the city of Downey actually have an advanced CERT program and those volunteers are actually trained throughout the year. They have credentialing, credentialing standards and they must pass, you know, basic background checks. And they are actually authorized to assist the city in various disaster preparedness, response and recovery functions affiliated with disaster volunteers. And so I believe that the, our fire department is currently looking and working towards bringing this type of, this type of program to our community. And so if Ms. Salazar, you're able to just provide some information behind that and if there's any support that council or any action council can do to support that program, if you could please let us know.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The, currently, the fire department is participating in the initial part of the CERT Trainer of Trainers program right now. So we do have certain firefighters that are participating on that online portion of the CERT training. And then what will happen after that, they'll do in-class training with other certified CERT trainers. And then once they finish that kind of practical component of it, we anticipate our first class to be launched in February. So starting in January, we'll start posting that. And then our goal under the fire chief and the direction of those staff members, we'll start hosting that in February. So stay on the lookout for that.
That's actually very exciting to hear that we are projecting that launch to be in February. That's a few months away. So I do appreciate our fire department in being proactive and really taking in the requirements and courses needed to begin teaching and training our, our residents in this emergency response sphere. And I really do encourage my colleagues to, whether it's joining the program or taking any type of training for elected officials when it comes to emergency preparedness is extremely vital and important. And then lastly are just two events or two activities that I'm promoting this year, activities that I've held the past three years. October is my favorite month. And to celebrate, I do just want to announce the Third Annual Halloween Pet Costume Contest. I was able to partner last year and this year with Butt Naked Grooming, an incredible business. They're actually residents of Monobello. They started in a, an actual mobile grooming business. And from there opened their first brick and mortar here in the city of Monobello and actually in my district. So I'm extremely proud of having a Monobello resident work their way up in just being able to launch and establish their business and, and their career in our city. I think that's something that we all, we all hope our residents can reach, those that want to be entrepreneurs. And so they've actually, will be joining me to sponsor three free groomings for the three top winners. So I am taking in nominations. If you have your pet dressing up this year, we'd love to see. So please submit your photos to us@scarletpralta.com. We will be choosing the top three winners. They'd be receiving not only the grooming, free grooming, but also some other spectacular treats and gift cards for Petco. And lastly is my Third Annual Spooktacular Haunted Home Decorating Contest. So this is something that I love to do every year is just drive around throughout Monobello and find some of the most creative, scariest type of Halloween homes out there and just surprise those families. Usually what I do is I'll get a gift card from one of our local businesses, eateries, and award them for having so much pride during this October. And so that's another opportunity. And just looking forward to all the, all the celebrations that we'll be having. I know the city is going to be doing a haunted, haunted fest as well towards, I believe that's the 28th, if I'm correct?
So we actually have a couple of different Halloween events this month. We do have the trunk or treat event that both our public safety departments are hosting over at the police department and that is October 20th, four to eight o'clock. And we also have the other events over at Grant Ray. So maybe David Sisnawski can speak to that because I'm just going off my old brain here.
No, you're good. That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and council. As the city manager mentioned, PD and Fire are hosting at the PD and City Hall parking lot on Friday, October 20th, the trunk or treat event. Some other fun surprises. Just met with them today to kind of got some more of the details. So you'll see a fire engine, little scare zone and some giveaways by both PD and Fire. And then the following Friday and Saturday at Grant Ray Park from six to nine, it's our Third Annual Haunted Train Ride. First year was at the golf course. Last year at Grant Ray was successful. So we'll be having the train ride Friday night and as well as Saturday with a little carnival event as well with costume contest for all the kids. So the train ride is a good, family-friendly, but you know, we recommend ages 10 and up. It's a little scary, so.
Thank you so much. No, I appreciate that. And thank you to you and your team as well, as well as fire and police for helping us celebrate this spooky month and hoping our community comes out and joins us for, for a fun time. With that, that concludes my council orals for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for your council orals, for your continued advocacy, for furthering the understanding and expansion of our tree canopy as well as the safety and security of our community. At this time, it would be appropriate to adjourn the meeting. Before we do so, I just want to take a moment of silence to recognize those victims of breast cancer, being Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'd also like to open up the floor to my colleagues to acknowledge any family, friends, community members that they're aware of that suffer from or have passed away from breast cancer. So I'll just look across the dais if anyone would like to take an opportunity.
Thank you for opening up that opportunity. I think that's, that's really kind of you. I would like to take the moment to just pay tribute to my grandma, Donia, who passed away from breast cancer.
I'd also like to recognize a few people. First, my aunt Laura Gutierrez, who passed away at 61, just this past May, I believe. My cousin Julie Galarzy, who passed away at the age of 50 last November. And a longtime community member, the owner of the First Daily Brew, a member of the Monobello Historic Society and a longtime straw optimist, Veronica Diaz. So if we can please take a moment to remember those that were mentioned, unmentioned and those battling today. Thank you very much for that honor. With that being said, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make your motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And we are adjourned at 9:25.